Welcome to the Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority Meeting. It is July the 16th at 7:00 PM. We are gathered here in council chambers at the Centennial Building, 12 South Fifth Street in Yukon, Oklahoma. Please rise as you're able to. We'll hear our invocation from Mark Borseth from Resurrection Lutheran Church, followed by our flag salute.
Let's pray. God, thank you for the gift of this place. Thank you for what you've been doing in this location for thousands of years. And we thank you for what you've been doing in this city since it's become the city of Yukon. And just thank you for all the blessings, all the amazing things you've done in this place. And we pray, Lord, that we would be good stewards of what's already been started here, all the good things that have brought us to this point. We just thank you for your faithfulness. And we pray, Lord, now for what you want to do next. And we ask that you would just continue to guide our leadership, but that we wouldn't depend upon our leadership, but that we, as a community, would be the people you've called us to be. And that we just become a place of blessing, not just to those who live here, but we become a blessing to those who pass through here, those who are affected by what happens here. I just pray for blessings upon our city council, our mayor. We pray for blessings upon our city staff. And we just thank you that you've given good people who are committed to give of their gifts and their time. And we just ask that we would bless those who are serving us. We pray this in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll call the roll. Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Pillmore.
Here.
Wooten.
Here.
Selby.
Shriver.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
This time, we'll have a proclamation for Vernon Turner Day. Mr. Zimmerman, can you join me and the coaches? As well as Vernon himself. Whereas Vernon Turner, a native of Yukon, Oklahoma, has demonstrated exceptional talent and dedication in the field of high jump. And Vernon Turner has represented Yukon and the state of Oklahoma with distinction at the collegiate level, notably setting records and achieving significant accolades. Vernon Turner's high school career at Yukon High School includes winning three state championships in the high jump and holding both the state meet record and the overall state record in the high jump. Vernon Turner's collegiate career at the University of Oklahoma includes being a two-time NCAA indoor champion in '22 and '23, NCAA outdoor runner-up 2023, and holding the program record for both indoor and outdoor high jump. Vernon Turner has been named Big 12 Performer of the Year in 2023 and has secured multiple Big 12 championships in high jump, showcasing his excellence and commitment. Vernon Turner has qualified to compete in the 2024 Olympics, bringing honor and pride to his hometown and serving as an inspiration to young athletes in our community. And his achievements are a testament to his hard work, determination, and unwavering support from his coaches, family, and the community. I, Brian Pillmore, Mayor of the City of Yukon, on behalf of the Yukon City Council and our entire community, do hereby proclaim Friday, July 26, 2024, the opening day of the 2024 Olympic Games as Vernon Turner Day. Thank you, Vernon. Thank you, Doug. Would you like to say something?
I mean, growing up in Yukon, you guys know, it used to be a smallish town and it's growing. And I just want kids to know and anybody to know, to just put Yukon on the map and just allow those kids to know that like, even if you come from Yukon, you can be an Olympian, you can shoot for like, the biggest dreams that you could ever have, even if you're not gonna achieve them or think that you can. Because when I was young, I definitely didn't think I was gonna be an Olympian. I didn't realize until I was about 16 or 17. So it's just God willing and without his blessing, I wouldn't be here today. So thank Yukon and thank Oklahoma. And I just look to make everybody proud, Yukon especially, but also the state of Oklahoma. So thank you, guys.
At this time, we'll have our visitor section of the agenda. Anyone having an item of business to present to the city council that does not appear on the agenda, please come to the podium at this time, state your name and address. You're requested to limit your presentation to three minutes. Any item being presented must pertain to city of Yukon business. Do we have any visitors that have signed up?
I have no request, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing no visitors, at this time, we'll recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. We'll take up the YMA consent docket. On the consent docket, this item is placed on the agenda so the Yukon Municipal Authority, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all authority members, that item will be heard in regular order. The acting city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 2, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second. Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we'll adjourn as Yukon Municipal Authority and reconvene as Yukon City Council. Consent docket at this time, we'll take up the Yukon City Council consent docket. Similarly, this item is placed on the agenda so the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to be approved by one motion. If an item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The acting city manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 2, 2024, payment of material claims in the amount of $1,028,370.48, the annual maintenance renewal for the police department subscription of New World CAD software, the cancellation of the city council regular meeting scheduled for October 15, 2024, the renewal of the existing contract between the city of Yukon and St. John Nipamuck Catholic School for one SRO officer for the term July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 for the sum of $75,000, the renewal of the existing inter-local government cooperation agreement with the city of Bethany, providing for the use of the jail for the term of July 1, 2024 through July 30, 2025, excuse me, at a rate of $42 per prisoner, and the same type of agreement with the city of the village for the same, I'm sorry, a different time period, September 1, 24 through June 30, 25. The renewal of the inter-local government agreement with the city of Piedmont, providing after-hours dispatch services for the term of July 1, 24 through June 30, 25, at the rate of $5,456.86, the renewal of inter-local governmental cooperation agreement with the city of Piedmont for the Yukon Jail for the term July 1 through June 30, 2025, at a rate of $42 per day per prisoner, the appointment of Amy Walters to be the at-large library seat as recommended by council member Wooten, designating the items on the attached list from the technology department as surplus and authorizing their sale, trade, donation, or disposal. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I had one question around the Motorola Solutions item, which had a significant overpayment from the previous year. Mr. City Manager, are you able to comment on that item?
Maybe the city clerk may be able to.
Very good. Doug, are you able to?
We had a double billing from the vendor, which we paid, and then we got a refund.
Okay. How do we prevent double billings in the future?
You know, our system will kick back anything that we try to enter that has, you know, the same number on it or the same, if it, it can tell when it looks like something's repeating. This did not.
This one didn't catch or it was a different number?
It was a different number. It was actually a different number we got billed for. So I'm not sure how we would catch that.
In this case, did the vendor catch it or we caught it in the subsequent years?
I believe they actually caught it.
Vendor caught it.
I think that they caught it and...
It's an honest vendor.
And they gave us a credit.
Yeah.
Put a credit on our bill and so we didn't have to pay nearly as much the next time.
Okay. I think it's a really good area for us to focus on as, you know, as a city clerk and finance department, to think about those controls, think about what are the things that can catch these in the future so that, you know, before the vendor catches it. Obviously, we as the city council, we review all the payables items and we would like to be able to catch those. But sometimes when you review hundreds of items, and sometimes those things can trail from period to period, so may occur in a different period. But it's really important that, I mean, there's nothing worse than paying for the same thing twice. All right. I have no other discussion items. Anyone else?
I do. On the day per jail, who's doing the hauling? What's it cost a day to house them? Mr. Chief? Who transports these visitors?
There aren't actually transport costs in these inter-local agreements. These are strictly for the facility and those entities, be it the city of the village, Piedmont, Bethany, they transport their own prisoners. Our fee and cost is actually just the housing. What it prevents or helps those agencies do is have a place to bring a prisoner under a municipal charge without having to take them all the way to Oklahoma County Jail or to the Canadian County Jail.
How long do they stay here for before you guys take them to Canadian County?
We actually don't ever transport them. They still belong to those entities and those agencies. They are responsible for all of those things. We are strictly just offering them a housing option outside of traveling an extended distance to a county jail or for their case to be heard before a municipal judge.
Perfect. Thank you. Hot pockets are included. Councilman Shriver. Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver.
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any reports from boards, commissions, or city officials?
I believe we have three reports tonight. A wastewater treatment project update from Robbie Williams, a Freedom Trail Playground and Splash Pad update from Ashley Geddes, and a street concrete panel replacement update from Arnold Adams.
Very good. Thank you, Robbie. Please give us an update.
All right. Good evening, Robbie Williams, Team Design. A month ago, I came and spent five or 10 minutes going through what we were gonna do just to go back through briefly. We're gonna be touching a lot of the plant. When the water enters, we have to lift the water. And we have old screw pumps that are 10 and 20 years that we're gonna replace with submersible pumps. And then our aeration basin, it was constructed in 1998. The blowers, the diffusers, they were replaced 10 years ago, but we're gonna replace that equipment. And then we're going to rehabilitate one of our old clarifiers. And that will allow us to take the one we're currently using down for rehabilitation. We're still on schedule to submit to DEQ on August 1st. And we're hoping within 60 to 90 days to have that permit. And as we talked about last time, if we get too concerned, we will go ahead and start bidding the project.
In parallel?
In parallel with that.
Good.
Does anybody have any questions?
Are you able to send out a draft of that application that you'll be sending to DEQ when it's ready?
Yes. There's an application for a permit to construct. And Mitch, the acting city manager, he actually signs that application.
Great. Yeah, when it's ready for signature, it'd be great to just see a copy just to educate the council members on what information's being sent to DEQ.
Yes. Any public or private that does any water or sanitary sewer work, they're required to get a permit to construct from DEQ. And all those permits go through the city manager's office.
Excellent.
So.
Good. We're looking forward to moving forward on this.
We'll make sure you get it.
Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you.
Ashley.
Say you've got good news.
Do you have good news?
Okay.
All right. Good evening.
Evening.
So since we last spoke, it's been about two weeks. I'd mentioned that we were waiting on a good rain day to confirm the drainage repairs were working and we got plenty of that on the 4th. So it does appear all water is draining in the correct direction near that two to five play feature. In regards to our sod installation, I'm gonna give a lot of kudos to our park maintenance team. They've been watering that sod and you can see in that photo there, in this heat, we've got, we've got some green grass there. So they've been, been working hard to keep it nice and moist over there. In regards to the splash pad, all the solenoids have been replaced by the plumber. We are still waiting on testing that. We don't have access to those boxes right now. ACS has their own locks on there. So we're waiting on getting that tested to confirm that that has fixed all the leaks that we have from both the solenoids in the box as well as the spray features. Our turf replacement, I had shown you this first photo the last time we met and we were a little concerned with what was going on there and why it looked almost laid over. The company has actually confirmed that that was burned. So how it got burned, not too sure if equipment was laid down on it and a hot day and whatnot is my best guess. But it has since been replaced. And you can see on that next page, we've got some, some good-looking turf. They've filled in all the sand, so we have level surfacing as well. So we're, at this point, we are, we are done with the turf. We've got our pour-in-place replacement. So on that next page, you can see, and it is kinda hard to look at the photos, on that inner circle, I've got some different coloration blue. That is staying, that, that will eventually fade in time. So that lighter blue that you're seeing is what the initial color looks like, and then that darker blue is what it will actually look like. So it'll match that two to five-year-old area right behind, you can see in that same photo. The green outer circle, they had some issues with that. Unfortunately, when they poured it based on humidity level or whatnot, it didn't, it didn't cure right. It started to bubble. It is very hard to look at the photos. Kind of on the next page, you can see where there's almost a lip in the middle of that circle or on either edge. And I know Mayor Pillmore, you were out there with me and you can, you can feel a difference. So although the photos aren't quite doing it justice, you can feel a difference. The company has agreed. They are coming out to repour that. We've been waiting on more material, workers, availability. They are looking like they'll be able to pour tomorrow now that's weather-dependent. So that, that's the big one that we're waiting on right now. We also have some picnic tables that were damaged. ACS is working with the vendor on a replacement option. I don't have a delivery date as of yet. That's not really holding us up on opening, though. We've received the letter of certification for the fall height on the five to 12-year-old play feature, and that is from both ACS and Rudy Construction. So that was, that's a big item there. Our backflow preventer has a cover on it, so no worries about, you know, anyone messing with that because that is a very pricey piece of equipment. Our lounge swings and other swings, we've, we've got that first picture on that swing installation page, that, those are swings that we will install. Our park maintenance crew are able to do that. That lower pitcher with the metal arms, that should be in on, actually today, they'll install on Thursday. Once they get done with that, there's some few areas on the actual arms and the arch that need some paint touch-up. So they're waiting until they get all that in because they anticipate getting it maybe scratched here and there, needing to touch that up a little bit more. So that, that will be done on Thursday. And then we also have some shims needing to be added to the two to five-year-old piece to level it out. One of the steps is slightly uneven. And we had issues with one of our signs peeling. So you can see where the paint's peeling. That, that's, it was actually a really small spot until we put blue tape on it and then it, so I mean, very, painter's tape shouldn't take that off. So they're actually gonna come out repaint that sign and get that repaired. We also had a fence post that was damaged. They'll need to come out and fix and then replace the actual panel on it. Right now, we're really waiting on that pour-in-place. We've, we've had several pour times that they've poured that people have walked through it, they have taken out, repoured it and whatnot. So really, we're waiting on that to get done. Once that's done, any of these other little projects that we have going on don't really matter. We can, we can get, we can get open. So I'd like to say two days after they pour this, but this last pour that they had and it started bubbling was something that we haven't experienced at all with any of the previous pours, and they've poured on multiple days under multiple conditions. So I'm, I was surprised to see this happen this particular time.
Yeah. What is the full, I know it's ready to walk on after a certain number of hours, but what's the full cure time on the pour-in-place?
I've asked that. I haven't gotten a clear answer on that. I've been told 48 hours.
Yeah. I think we gotta, we gotta play it safe on, when, when it's done right, it's done right and we can open, but it's gotta be done right.
And, and you've seen, they poured about a week ago is when they poured that, that other blue circle. So you can still see it's changing colors. The UV does that to it, especially with the glue and the bonding and all that. So it's kind of a little, depending on humidity in the air, it's, they're having to mix it separate and all that's mixed on site.
Does it, is it like an air bubble under there or is it solid?
It, it doesn't feel solid, but it doesn't feel like an air bubble either. So it's kinda hard to describe. It feels a little squishier in that, that area. And if you run your hand over it, you, you can feel a little bit of a lip there on each side.
Yeah. And I was wondering, because we've, with our new track surface, we got a couple of years ago, we've had some bubbles come up that are kinda moisture and heat-related.
Mm-hmm.
So I wasn't sure.
And that, that's what they think this was. We've, we've got all that grass out there and we're watering and they think they just didn't mix the glue correctly with the pour-in-place that day and got everything quite right.
You might, you might ask about if they think some kind of vapor barrier, because that's what they talked to us about, was next time we need a vapor barrier under there. I don't know. I don't know if they're exactly the same or...
Yeah, I can, I can certainly ask.
A little bit different type scenarios, but, but I know, yeah. It's kind of, kind of annoying and an enigma when you, when you find it.
Yeah. It's, it's a little frustrating because we, we, they poured it last Tuesday, so we're, we're now a week, a week out from there and waiting on this one, one component to get done, so.
And you mentioned workers' availability. Is that their workers' availability?
Yep, through ACS. So I deal directly with Rudy Construction most of the time, but their subcontractors, ACS, and ACS is who is...
Slowing us down?
From, yeah, from my understanding, they were working on availability based on some communications yesterday.
I think behind they would make availability.
Well, Ashley certainly pushed them very hard to, to, you know, work with a sense of urgency. And we wouldn't be where we are now without her day, this is a daily manage, for the last 60 days, Ashley's been managing this on a daily basis and it's made a big difference in...
Big difference.
The right progress.
Agreed.
Appreciate that. Any other questions?
Thank you for the update.
All right. Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Arnold? All right.
I'll share with Rodney. Who'll share it to you? There plenty of them.
Good evening. So if you'll note, remembering the budget process, we talked about a concrete panel replacement project. We talked about doing 96. Mayor Pillmore had asked that we do 24 in each ward. So Mitch had asked me to put the, compile the list, put it on a map where you guys can see it. It's spread out. We spread that thing all over the whole city. So that is our list of 96. If you agree with the list, we will bring that back next week, or next council meeting, excuse me, for approval. If you remember, city staff is gonna do half of these and we'll have a contractor do the other 48.
Great.
And they're on board, ready to start.
Is that Brewer or somebody else?
Brewer Construction.
Brewer. Okay. Good. Okay. And then just for, for our, for my reminder and for, for all our benefit, certain road surfaces that are cracked or have some, some failure can be fixed with a panel replacement, but others cannot. Can you help educate us, you know, at a sixth-grade level on what, what, you know, like, like, what, what makes a difference if I was to look at Victoria Drive? Maybe there's one, you've said one that could be replaced there, but maybe there's another area that's more broken, but it, but that can't be replaced by just a panel replacement. It requires something more extensive.
So as you know, we have several hundred lane miles of asphalt and concrete streets in Yukon. So what we tried to pick out was something that had, the concrete is busted up, not just a lineal crack or a crack across it, a hole that is not, some of the cracks, we can go into this crack seal, we can make that last, you know, structurally, it's okay. It just has a crack. All of these areas, we tried to pick that are settling, has holes, concrete actually missing.
Yep.
And you'll see in the, this type of temperature, we have several panels that are buckling and making little ramps everywhere, so.
Are there some where the buckling or the, or, or the holes are too severe or the subgrade is failed more significantly that you can't replace with a panel replacement?
No, I believe most, most of the time when we have these, those type of failures, they are base failures.
On concrete roads, most of them, we can, we can fix with this panel replacement.
So when we, when we take the panel out, we overdig it six to eight inches and put a rock base back in. A lot of times in the past, there's not a very good base under the, the concrete.
Yep.
A lot of times we just put in, just put sand and over time, it gets a crack, the sand washes away. So there's nothing under the, the concrete.
So in this panel replacement, we're gonna do some work to kinda shore up the, the subgrade?
Absolutely. Every one of them. It'll be outstanding.
When you think about our timeline for, you know, the city staff doing half and, and the contractor doing half, and given, obviously, you can't control the weather, but we do know that it's really, really hot right now and it's tough to pour concrete in the middle of the day in this environment, but hopefully some cooler days will come. But when can we, when can we power through these? So I, I fully want to, whether it's the middle of the year, you know, the beginning of the next calendar year, I wanna do a budget amendment and do a bunch more road work beyond these 96.
Well, the contractor is ready. He's on board. He could knock his out in 30 to 60 days.
He can pour early in the morn, you know, he's gonna pour at 3:00 AM when, when the temperature allows?
Well, they typically pour about 5:00 to 6:00 AM.
5:00 to 6:00 AM. Okay.
And a lot of days, that, most days, they can tear the panel out and pour it the same day. Or sometimes they'll come in late in the, you know, tear it out the day before, pour it the next morning.
So they have capacity. They have capacity?
Yes.
To move through these?
Yes.
Let's do it.
Okay. We'll get that on the next.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look through this. If any council person has any issue, I'll, I'll expect them to email the, the city manager and mention any issues. But my opinion, I don't think we have any issues here. This is a discussion-only item. We're not, we've already budgeted these and you run your department, Arnold, the city manager knows what's going on. So if anybody has any issues, council persons, just email Mitchell. We'll make sure that we get this to Councilwoman Selby as well, get an electronic copy to her for her review. Thank you.
Thanks.
At this time, we'll conduct a discussion on traffic planning and feedback for special events in Yukon. Do we have any comment, public comment? All right. Seeing no public comment, we'll move this discussion item to another time. At this time, we'll consider approving budget amendments for fiscal year 2023, 2024. These are being approved for final year-end entries. And do I hear a motion to approve these budget amendments?
Second.
Is there a motion?
Do I hear a motion?
Oh, no. Sorry. No bad. No, sir. No, man.
So moved.
A second. Any discussion? These items are being approved for year-end entries, as I understand, and we've made Uh, these items are being approved for year end entries, as I understand, um, and we've made a policy change uh, to, in the current fiscal year, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year, that we do know, we no longer allow retroactive budget adjustments. Any budget adjustments that are necessary must be made prior to the spending. And um, and, and we really uh, need tight controls on that. Any other discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving the labor and material costs for Brewer Construction for the storm drain improvements in the Kings Ridge addition not to exceed two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-eight cents to be paid from the twenty twenty-three concrete asphalt paving drainage water and sewer contract to abide by all the restrictions and requirements found in two CFR part two hundred, appendix two for contracts made with American Rescue Plan Act, a coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds as recommended by the acting city manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion to execute the NeoGov service agreement for a three-year subscription with a one-year cost of seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty cents, year two, eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, and year three, eleven thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars to be paid from the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five technology budget as recommended by the information technology director. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
You want to give us a idea of what we're looking at here?
NeoGov services? Or, or Cindy if she'd like to.
Either way.
Oh, Gary's got it.
Uh, the HR department has been using Civic HR by Civic Plus uh, for about the last five years. And uh, Civic Plus is doing away with that product. They're no longer going to compete in the applicant tracking arena. And they were pushing um their clients to use a software called Criterion. Um, we looked at Criterion and we looked at some competitors to Criterion. Um, Criterion didn't have a lot of good things to be said about it when you looked at the comments. Um, NeoGov is an applicant tracking uh, solution that caters to just government entities. Um, and so after we looked at it, we have to move to something because they're shutting the other one off September thirtieth. So we have a short window to do something and uh, anyway, it'll allow us to continue to post online um, applications and a lot of the features that don't work in Civic HR will work in this, so.
Will this give you everything that you need?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Cindy, you'd be happy with it? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you pl- please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes. All right, all of the following items will be for easements. Um, and uh, these are all related to the storm drain project that we approved uh, uh, two, two items ago. Um, so I'll move through these quickly. Uh, at this time, we'll consider a motion to approve a temporary easement from Stephen and Brayden Lee, parcel three point oh for Kings Ridge Lake Estates Storm Drain Improvements as recommended by the acting city manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, please call the vote.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion to approve a permanent easement from Stephen and Brayden Lee, parcel three point oh for Kings Ridge latest, Lake Estates Storm Drain Improvements as recommended by the acting city manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion to approve temporary easement between the City of Yukon and Matthew and Ashley Aggie, parcel two point oh for Kings Ridge Lake Estates Storm Drain Improvements as recommended by the acting city manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion to approve a permanent easement for Matthew and Ashley Aggie, parcel two point oh for Kings Ridge Lake Estates Storm Drain Improvements as recommended by the acting city manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion to approve a temporary easement between the City of Yukon and K R L E LLC parcel five point oh, Kings Ridge Lake Estates Storm Drain Improvements as recommended by the acting city manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes. At this time, we'll consider a motion to approve a permanent easement from K R L E LLC parcel five point oh for the Kings Ridge Lake Estates Storm Drain Improvements as recommended by the acting city manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion to approve a temporary easement between the City of Yukon and Crabtree Homes parcel four point oh for Kings Ridge Lake Estates Storm Drain Improvements as recommended by the acting city manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion to approve a permanent easement between the City of Yukon and Crabtree Homes parcel four point oh for Kings Ridge Lake Estates Storm Drain Improvements as recommended by the acting city manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion to approve a permanent easement between the City of Yukon and Caleb J. and KCB Kenny Revocable Trust parcel one point oh for Kings Ridge Lake Estates Storm Drain Improvements as recommended by the acting city manager. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes. Okay, that was a lot.
Good job on that.
You want, you want to do some more of those?
I wa- I'm, I'm auditioning as an auctioneer later.
When we have this many, is that not something we can set up like on the consent dockets? Because that's a lot of
Excuse me, they could be on the consent dock, but they do have to each be a separate agenda item because they're each a separate property owner.
He's basically saying I'll still have to read them, basically. Okay, um, the next five items are all of the charter resolutions which we um, and possibly maybe someone uh, in the public may want to have any discussion or any council persons. These are the final uh, charter uh, items that will be approved and following this approval, they will all be sent in final draft form, which Roger has already run by the Canadian County Election Board, um, and Alan there is so helpful, has already reviewed them. Um, so we believe that these are in final, final form. Um, and we will go through each one and uh, I will pause a little longer for discussion in case anybody has any. Um, at this time, we'll consider approving resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten, a resolution authorizing the calling of a calling and holding of a special election in the City of Yukon, County of Canadian, State of Oklahoma to be held on the fifth day of November twenty twenty-four for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, the question of whether the proposed amendments to Article Two, Section nineteen of the City Charter of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma should be ratified, approved and adopted. Which proposed amendments would be different from the present charter by adding publication and codification of ordinances of the city in digital publicly accessible form via digital online service accessible to the public, directing the city clerk to cause this resolution to be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the city, directing the city clerk to deliver to the secretary of the Canadian County Election Board a copy of this resolution, a copy of the city charter and any other information required by law or necessary for conducting said election. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just broadly for information, this item will di- essentially uh, it put in our city charter digitate, digitization of our codes, our ordinances and so on. Um, and uh, it kind of brings us into the twenty-first century there. Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Item seventeen, we will consider approving resolution number twenty twenty-four dash eleven, a resolution authorizing the calling and holding of a special election in the City of Yukon, County of Canadian, State of Oklahoma to be held on the fifth day of November twenty twenty-four for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, the question of whether the proposed amendments of the city charter of the City of Yukon should be ratified, approved and adopted. Which proposed amendments would be different from the present charter by substituting the gender, gender neutral term council member for the term councilman, setting forth the proposition to be voted upon, directing the city clerk to cause this resolution to be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the city, directing the city clerk to deliver to the Secretary of Canadian County Election Board a copy of this resolution, a copy of the city charter and any other information required by law or necessary for conducting said election. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Broadly, this is uh, replacing um, typically male gendered terms with gender neutral terms. Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve, a resolution authorizing the calling of and holding of a special election in the City of Yukon, County of Canadian, State of Oklahoma to be held on the fifth day of November twenty twenty-four for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, the question of whether the proposed amendments to Article Two adding a new section twenty of the city charter of the City of Yukon should be ratified, approved and adopted. Which proposed amendments would be different from the present charter by adding a new section twenty addressing the authority, grounds, procedure and effect of censure, setting forth a proposition to be voted upon, directing the city clerk to cause this resolution to be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the city, directing the city clerk to deliver to the Secretary of the Canadian County Election Board a copy of this resolution, a copy of the city charter as it relates to codification and publication of ordinances and any other information required by law or necessary for conducting said election. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Broadly, this item um, puts in place a procedure and um, and a process related to uh, sent, uh, the act of censuring amongst the city council members. Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes. At this time, we'll consider approving resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, a resolution authorizing the calling and holding of a special election in the City of Yukon, County of Canadian, State of Oklahoma to be held on the fifth day of November twenty twenty-four for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, the question of whether the proposed amendments to Article Nine, Section sixty of the City Charter of the City of Yukon should be ratified, approved and adopted. Which proposed amendments would be different from the present charter by substituting the term City of Yukon residents for the term freeholders, setting forth the proposition to be voted upon, directing the city clerk to cause this resolution to be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the city, directing the city clerk to deliver to the Secretary of the Canadian County Election Board a copy of this resolution, a copy of the city charter and any other information required by law or necessary for conducting said election. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Broadly, again, this item uh, replaces uh, antiquated term of freeholders with a modern term of City of Yukon residents. Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen, a resolution authorizing the calling and the holding of a special election in the City of Yukon, Can- County of Canadian, State of Oklahoma to be held on the fifth day of November twenty twenty-four for the purpose of submitting to the qualified electors of the City of Yukon, Oklahoma, the question of whether the proposed amendments to Article Two, Sections four and five and Article Six, Sections thirty-four, thirty-five and thirty-six of the City Charter of the City of Yukon should be ratified, approved and adopted. Which proposed amendments would be different from the present charter by eliminating election of a councilman at large, adding language, calling for the election of the mayor at large, establishing terms, filing times and election times, setting forth the proposition to be voted upon, directing the city clerk to cause this resolution to be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the city, directing the city clerk to deliver to the Secretary of the Canadian County Election Board a copy of this resolution, a copy of the city charter and any other information required by law or necessary for conducting said election. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? This item uh, again, it establishes um, a change which will be electing of the mayor by the people of um, of Yukon and uh, and it will establish that on a four-year term. Um, and that will first take place uh, in twenty twenty-seven. So this will be, when sent to the uh, Canadian County Election Board, this will be on the ballot in November. Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, a motion to suspend the rules and move item twenty-five to the next item to basically get people, let them go home, because we're going to go into executive session and this will give us a chance to do our council discussion.
Very good. We have a privileged motion on the table uh, to suspend the rules and move item twenty-five to the next item. Uh, do I hear a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You can take the items on the agenda in any order. You don't need a motion for it.
Very good. Thank you. All right, seeing the feedback from the city clerk, we'll take item twenty-five. We'll begin uh, with Councilman Shriver. Any comments, Councilman Shriver?
Um, yeah, I'd like to give thanks to, to Arnold, Ashley and Robbie for taking y'all's projects on ahead and really leading it pretty quick. Arnold, your map's pretty impressive. Ashley, what you're doing over at the parks, very appreciative. So that's about all I got. Just thanks for y'all's hard effort out there. I know it's hot and keep grinding, guys.
Councilperson Zimmerman?
Look at the Olympic schedule, tune in and, and watch Vernon. I wish him the best of luck and I, I need to say this often, I didn't coach him directly. So I got to kind of sit back and watch Coach Kevin Ritter and him work at the high jump and his senior year. They would get so many people by the high jump, they'd have to shut the meat down and let that finish first. He handled all that greatly. He's one of the most humble people I've ever been around. So watch him, support him.
Vice Mayor Wooten?
Uh, congrats to Vernon making the Olympics. That's amazing. Also, we had um, three Yukon boys that has, that have ties to Yukon that got drafted this week for the Major League Baseball. Um, congrats to them and also want to thank Amy Walters for serving as the at-large library board secretary.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Uh, some special events coming up. On the road tour in Yukon, K O C O is celebrating their um, anniversary and they will be in our park July the eighteenth, that's two days from now, from three thirty PM to six thirty PM in Chisholm Trail Park. It's free to everyone. There'll be a lot of booths, please come out. Um, I know that Yukon uh, will show a great town spirit there. There'll be yard games, inflatable carnival games, local vendors, an archery range, book bus, food trucks and more. Um, K O C O will also be doing their five PM and six PM broadcasts under the big gazebo. So hopefully it'll be like ESPN game day. We'll get everybody behind the gazebo, you know, showing up. Concerts in the park every Thursday through August the eighth, uh, again, seven PM to eight thirty PM. That's immediately after the K O C O on the road for this week. Um, and uh, that's also held in the Chisholm Trail Park Large Gazebo. It's free to everyone, all ages are welcome. Um, and there's a new band each week. Friday Funday's, every Friday through August the ninth, ten AM of various parks and facilities in Yukon. Check out the website. It's free to everyone, all ages are welcome, but the activities are geared towards children. As for myself, uh, this week has been an eventful week. The attempted assassination of former president uh, and presidential candidate Donald Trump last week resulted in the tragic death of a dedicated husband, father and volunteer firefighter Corey Compratore, as well as significant injuries to David Dutch and James Copenhagen. This brings us to a critical moment in our nation's history and our journey where we must announce all forms of political violence and rhetoric that may incite violence. This message is not about just political disagreement, it's about maintaining the foundation of our republic, the principles of our peaceful discourse. Our own city charter echoes in many, many places the importance of protect, protecting life and property. We must extend these values to our national, state and local discourse. Historical contexts and wisdom from revered figures underscore the necessity of peace and respect and political dialogue. Martin Luther King Junior reminds us that darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that. Moreover, I referenced Abraham Lincoln's Gettysburg Address two weeks ago at Freedom Fest and now I'll reference his first inaugural address which was delivered during a time of great division in the US. Indeed, only a month after he gave his address, the country erupted in civil war and the Confederacy's attack uh, with the Confederacy's attack on Fort Sumter. Lincoln implored the nation in closing his speech. He said, "We are not enemies, but friends." We must not be enemies, although our passions may be strained, it must not break our bonds of affection. Lincoln's call for unity and friendship over enmity remains profoundly relevant today. It's our responsibility to relevant today. It's our responsibility to ensure that political competition does not devolve into personal threats or violence. By upholding the principles of respectful discourse and peaceful resolution of conflicts, we honor the ideals that our republic was founded upon and ensure a safer and more stable society for all. Um, thank you all for your comments. I appreciate the liveliness of our community, and I hope that we can move forward with that kind of respectful dialogue. All right. We, at this time, we're going to consider a motion to recess as the Yukon City Council convenes into executive session. Uh, we, we will be making a revision to item twenty-one here. We were informed that our attorney, working on the lawsuit, would not be able to attend this evening. Um, and, but we will still be, uh, moving into executive session, considering a motion to, uh, recess to discuss the candidates for city manager as provided in twenty-five OS two-thousand-three, Section three-oh-seven B one, and take appropriate action in open session. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
As Yukon City Council, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
I would now like to read the minutes of the executive session. While in executive session, only the items on the agenda were discussed. No action was taken, and no votes were cast. At this time, uh, is there any new business?
None tonight, Mr. Mayor.
And earlier this evening, we did the item number twenty-five. At this time, we'll adjourn the meeting.